Is desired that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for separate discussion?
Yes, sir.
I would like item number two for claims and vote. So any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay, hearing known with the exception of claims, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the claims was made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Shum, all in favor of that motion. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero. Next item is the claims. I would entertain a motion to approve claims to 223 vendors in the amount of $4,588,249.14 and to the payroll in the amount of $1,982,053.98. I would entertain a motion of those claims.
Motion.
Motion made in second for approval of those claims was made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Riordan, all in favor of that motion. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five zero. Now, vendors, seven vendors on Rock Chalk Park related items, the amount of $46,457.49.
So moved.
Motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Riordan, all in favor of that motion. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That passes four to one. Mayor McVoting in dissension. City managers report, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. We've got the rental licensing report that Scott and his department has prepared and will be happy to respond to questions. We see this as a work in progress to make sure that we're doing a good job of reporting to you and the public what we are doing in regards to this new program. So if you have an opportunity to look at that, be sure and ask questions, and we will continue to make improvements on it so that we can do a good job of measuring the program and being held accountable with it and seeing if we can improve it. I have asked Chuck just to speak for one minute, and we've got a little bit of a challenge on time. You've got two things he wants to talk about, just real quickly.
Today was our first day for recycling. We had a great turnout, and the crews did an excellent job. We recycled just today 50 tons or 100,000 pounds in one day. So hands off, hats off to our crews. Just a reminder for everybody, tomorrow, Wednesday, is Sixth and Fifteenth, east of Castle, put out your recycling bins, and we'll see how much we get there. But our crews did a great job, great publicity, we've got great participation, so I wanted to let the commission know that.
It's 50 tons, it's not going to the landfill.
50 tons not going to the landfill, so be recycling. And it's very clean product, very little contamination at this point, so. The one thing is, if I can, just let people know, separate your trash container and your poly, and your recycling container by about three feet. We've got two guys going right now, just so we can get these things going right, but those arms, they can't grab both containers and they can't separate them, so they need a couple feet between each container, so you can grab one, dump it, and the other car can come and grab the other one and dump it, so just FYI. So I just wanted to real briefly let the commission know too, and the public, what we're doing at Sixth and Iowa this weekend. This is pretty much the project limits. We are going to start milling and overlaying on Sixth Street and Iowa Street. We're going to do the entire thing this Friday and Saturday, and we're going to have it all milled. So on Friday, we're going to start milling across here, and Friday night at around seven o'clock, we will shut access on Sixth Street to Iowa. So you won't be able to access Sixth Street from Iowa, and you won't be able to get onto Iowa off of Sixth Street, just because we've got to the Crown of the Road, the grave, the way it all ties in in this intersection's kind of difficult. We'll open it back up by 10:00. It will be a milled surface, and then Saturday morning, they're going to come in and they're going to overlay the southern or the eastbound side of Sixth and all of Iowa, and again, Iowa will be closed during the overlay portion, and then Monday morning, they'll come back in and they'll do the north side of the westbound lane on Sixth Street. They'll still have some interim closures to finish up sidewalks and guard rail and get the signal in, but after Monday, all the permanent pavement and striping will be done, and that left turn lane will be accessible. And I just wanted to give everybody just a quick, so you can take a look and remember, this is, this is the west side, you're going eastbound, we'll have right turn lane, two through lanes, and then, I think I could zoom in. The much awaited four, westbound, left turn lane will be available. Don't want people to forget Iowa Street. I'm getting too many papers up here. Zoom back out. We will have two left turn lanes on Iowa Street after this is done, one right turn lane, and only one receiving southbound lane. So just want to remind the commission of that, but the main thing to remember is Sixth and Iowa will be kind of awkward to get through this weekend, at least on Saturday morning, so you might want to remember that.
Okay. Questions to Chuck? Chuck, thank you. We are on to the regular agenda. I would ask people to silence their cell phones, as this is a business meeting. I would remind everybody, we will give you three minutes under all public comment this evening to be able to address the commission on any of these matters. So the first item that is on the agenda is to consider a request to approve a street event permit for the Kansas Half Marathon and 5K to close various streets in downtown and throughout Lawrence from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, November 2nd, 2014. Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners Mark Till at the City Public Works Department. The Silverback Enterprises in partnership with Lawrence Healthcare Access have submitted their annual request to hold their half marathon and their 5K race. The benefit of this proceeds from, proceeds from this event benefit that organization. The key, I think, key thing here is there's two routes. There's a 5K route, which mirrors the color run that was held this past Saturday. It gets runners out of downtown quickly, and then they have a minimal amount of runners coming back across the key streets, New Hampshire, Vermont, and Massachusetts for that, heading back to Watson Park. The half marathon route takes runners Seventh to Massachusetts, south to Fifteenth, and then east out of town. Once they get that group of runners out of town, the first 15 to 20 minutes of the event, there will be continued intersection closures with the event, but they'll be out of the downtown area within the first 15 or 20 minutes. And from there back, when they do come into downtown and cross the river and then cross Sixth Street again, they'll be either using the sidewalk or a park, or in this case, towards the end of the race when they cross Sixth Street, they are going to utilize Picney Tunnel and cross under Sixth Street, so we won't have any impact there at Sixth Street, then back to Seventh and then into Watson Park for the conclusion of the event. The Healthcare Access Group has contacted all of the churches in the area to coordinate this year's event, to make sure they know how their patrons and members are to get to services on Sunday morning. They will also put a notice in the Journal World a week or so before the event to let property owners along the route know how they're going to be impacted by the event. They have indicated that they will maintain local access as needed. The city will provide message boards for the event at our normal kind of strategic corners of southeast Lawrence and northwest Lawrence to notify motorists heading into the downtown area that there is an event in progress, to allow them time to make alternate route decisions. They have also requested that the fire medical services and the Lawrence Police Department Services and any public works services be donated as a, as a condition of the event permit. The fire medical group has agreed to post a unit in North Lawrence for the duration of both of these events. And let me see if I'm covering everything that I wanted to tell you. So tonight, I think that's pretty much what you need to know. For starters, the, you have to, if appropriate, approve the right-of-way street event permit from 7:00 to 11:00 on November 2nd, and approve the donation of city services. Ryan Robertson with Silverback is here, Elliot Johnson and Kim Paulson with Lawrence Healthcare Access are also here, as well as myself, to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Questions?
Questions to the applicant?
Okay. Thank you. The applicant is here?
I'm sorry?
You said the applicant hit.
Yeah. Lawrence Healthcare Access.
Hello, Ryan Robinson with Silverback, here to answer any questions.
Bob?
Yeah, I had two different conversations today. And first of all, both parties wanted to know if, well, first of all, it's my understanding that this race is a for-profit enterprise with a small, with some money going to Healthcare Access, is that correct?
All, all proceeds of this event go to Healthcare Access.
About what percent of the gross take would that be?
That would be 100% of the profits go to Healthcare Access.
Okay. And they were misunderstood, they, they thought that this had a financial component that was a profit component for the company putting it on.
Well, we are, we are contracted by Healthcare Access to do road closures, traffic control, that sort of thing.
The caller specifically said they thought that the police should be, the city should be paid for the police services and the health, or the medical services because there is sufficient amount of money, and that they cited that this is the norm in the Kansas City area as opposed to not paying for it. You can respond to that if you'd like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to really to respond to, I mean, it's, as far as I'm concerned with this, or as far as I know with this event, that it's, the, the services have always been donated for this event, I mean, and mainly for the fact that it is a for-profit event. It's their largest, it's Healthcare Access's largest fundraiser for the year. I can really only kind of speak on the history of the event, not what's customary in Kansas City.
How many runners do you expect?
I think we'll probably be right around 1,200 to 1,300.
And do you have any idea what Healthcare Access might expect to net off this race?
I, I do not. I think that Elliot or, I mean, we're, we're essentially, we're a traffic control company that is out there shutting down roads, I mean, it's what we do all over the country. Elliot, do you have a?
No.
Come on, sir. Come on up.
We were hoping to net profit somewhere around 35,000, oh, sorry, $35,000 for Healthcare Access for the event.
And you're, you're connected with Healthcare?
Yeah, sorry, I'm the development coordinator at Healthcare Access.
And, I'm sorry, the number 35,000?
35,000.
Is that what you've expected, or what you've enjoyed in the past?
It's down from the past. We were part of a three series half marathon last year, and it was in the spring, so we had a lot of changes happen this year. So we moved it to the fall, and it's not part of that series, so it's just the one half marathon, so we're expecting lower attendance.
Good, thank you. Other questions? Okay, don't go away. Thank you. Public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, back to the commission.
We've got a question for staff. What is the normal procedure for supplying police and health workers for the time, the duration of the run? Is it, do we normally charge for that, or normally not charged for?
It depends on the event. Normally, for-profit events such as the color run that was held last week would be 100% reimbursable. We are in the process of preparing an invoice to that organization. You all have in the past donated services for some events, and some events have not even requested that, that were nonprofit type events or charity fundraiser type events. But typically, we require that for like 5Ks and small things, but it's, it's a mix, it's gone both ways.
Good. And in the past, the monies that we've used on this has been from guest tax, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
One more question for the applicant.
Elliot?
What, what is the cost? You say you're going to have 1,200 half marathoners, or is that everybody, 5Ks?
That's everybody.
And what's the cost for the half marathon?
Oh, the, right now, the registration cost?
Yeah.
Is $65.
And then the 5K is how much?
40.
Okay.
And that's been scaled up since June when we opened registration.
Right.
So Bob, how much is the gross?
Oh, 60,000.
Okay.
I mean, if you take an average of the two, times 1,200, 60,000.
Okay.
Well, here's, here's what both callers said, and they were unrelated to each other, and one was, the two different sites, I'm sure they weren't connected at all, but they're concerned about charity events that aren't as charitable as they could be, and they were asking for more transparency. I don't know if you do that with a final report, with, with an income statement like Docket, where they have to show the gross and the expenses and the net, and, I mean, I don't think that's a bad policy to have for any of these charitable races, especially if they tag a, a for charity byline on, on the, on the event. I mean, you know, it's, it's just in a, being very transparent about the whole situation. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I'm not suggesting that this is not a worthy event, it very much is, and so is Healthcare Access, but there are people who are concerned that, just in general, about the type of presentation that this makes, that it's a charitable event, and indeed, if your gross is somewhere around 60,000 and you've got 30,000 or 35,000 going back to Healthcare Access, that's, that's a difference of dollars there. And it very well could be that there's that much cost involved in it.
So is it something that you want to look at, you know, these organizations create a participation in covering the costs of such event, you know, in the future, starting now? What is the deal?
Where do you start? I don't know. Both people were adamant that we should be served, that we should be charging for our city services, and then the other, both of them said they thought that it should be more, all these type of events should be more transparent.
Okay. Comments on that?
Well, I, I remember this marathon, half marathon, you know, being the brainchild of Healthcare Access as the primary fundraising opportunity. I don't think this is a private company trying to tag it with a, you know, nonprofit label. I mean, this, this was created by Healthcare Access to generate revenue, and a couple years back, we talked about trying to charge them for their services, and I remember being on the commission, and I think you were here too, Bob, but they, you know, they scoffed at that because basically we're taking money out of their pocket, and we're just going to have to somehow come back in and pay it out some other way. And at the time, the city rarely charged for any sort of assistance for these types of events, and I think we started a program, we started charging people and tried to have more accountability, and I think that's a reasonable thing, but just to remind everybody, this is, this is a, has historically been, correct me if I'm wrong, solely a fundraising opportunity for Healthcare Access, something that I think we benefit as a city from having healthier citizens, and of course, lowering the cost of our contribution to that organization to help it, you know, maintain its, its ability to serve. So I agree with you, I think accountability is good, I think if we want to ask for that, I think that's reasonable, especially if it's a, if it's a non-for-profit entity, but I want to make sure everyone understands this is, this is not a, you know, bait and switch situation where, you know, somebody's coming in and trying to throw the additional revenue to a nonprofit. This is all about raising money for a nonprofit organization, and it always has been from my understanding.
And we had, and we did have quite a bit of discussion as to where the money was going to come from, and because it attracts quite a few visitors from outer town.
That's right.
It was something that was appropriate to be looking at, you know, transient guest tax money, so.
Well, and that's, that's right. It's my understanding that Healthcare Access used to run this themselves, and for one reason or another, they, they decided to sub it out to a contractor, basically is what it is. And so that's, that's where, that's the genesis of it.
Yeah, and it's grown, expanded, and encompassed more people, and luckily, it's been more successful because it raises more money, but I think as any event gets larger, you need to, you know, we were lucky to have a professional group in this town to help us with this. They do it all over the country, and I think it's reasonable to help the local business generate income as well, if they're professionals and Healthcare Access is not capable of doing it themselves. But I agree with you, I think if we should, if we want to ask for, you know, documentation, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Well, I would say I'm fine with waiving the fee for the police and medical, if indeed we can get a financial report when it's over to see what, what we're dealing with, not just with this event, but with any charitable event where we're asked to give services, I think that's a reasonable request.
What, what are you looking for in that? I mean?
Transparency.
Well, sure, but are we going to be the judges of a $60,000 event if in fact that's what it is, 25,000 goes to cost? It seems like we're then, because all those documents then become public record, you know, and the public, you know, it's, it's different than running a business. I mean, I know Kim understands this, being the director of a nonprofit, like, you have to, you know, we get slammed all the time for, for our overhead being more than 10%. And, you know, I'm saying not our being just food, but overhead in nonprofits being more than, more than 10%, and if it's up above that, then people, people are certainly frustrated that you're spending too much money on salaries. And so I just feel like that would be, I mean, I don't have any skin in the game here because we're not going to ask the city to waive any services anytime soon because we don't have any events that would do that, but from, from, from the nonprofit perspective, I'd be curious to maybe hear from you, but I think that, I think that for me, you know, all of that leads the public to say, well, God, you're making $60,000 and $25,000 is way too much, and jumping on Ryan's back, saying, charge way less, and he can't because he has salaries to pay too. I just think we get into a really, really dangerous and slippery situation there. I'm not against it, I'm just saying like that's the, that's the other perspective. Nonprofits don't get enough credit for what they do, and, and their staff works their ass off to try to make sure that, you know, events are run in a good way, and, and I'm saying this to you, I'm saying this to everybody, but, but I think that, you know, for us, like, we, we have three full-time staff members, you don't have that many full-time staff members, you want to try to do it with your own staff if you can, but ultimately, there comes a point when you can't, because what you're spending with staff time and resources, they're taken away from the jobs that they're supposed to do to, to get people well. So I, I'd be curious to hear what you think about that.
I'm Kim Paulson, I'm serving as the interim executive director at Healthcare Access. One of the things that we hear over and over again is avoid duplication of services, find those people who do what they do best, and work with those people. And for us to try and put on this type of event, to raise this type of revenue for Healthcare Access would not be possible because we're in the business of taking care of patients. So that's what we do, we need to partner with organizations like Ryan's organization, other businesses in town, to work with them, to do what they do best and result in revenue so we can do, take care of our business. It's true, Elliot puts a lot of time and energy into this, but we could not do this on our own with one development coordinator who is working on everything that we do. We try and make sure that we run a very lean machine with Healthcare Access in terms of our staff, so when we need to pull in expertise, we do so.
Questions?
I, I think there's a definite segment of the population that has doubts about the veracity of these type of activities, and so therefore, I think, I feel pretty comfortable with the fact that this is a nonprofit group that's using a profit agency so they can do this, because they couldn't do it otherwise. And if you create a situation with transparency where you have people do it, and people can look at it and find out what they're doing, if they want to complain about it, they can complain to the agencies, but I don't see anything wrong with a nonprofit asking somebody to come in and help them run this type of thing. I think that's, that's very reasonable to do because they have the expertise to do it, and the agency doesn't. This happens all the time, so I, I guess I would think that in the interest of transparency, that we create a situation where if somebody wants to waive the fee, they have to verify that it is a nonprofit, and that it is reasonable, and it can come before the city commission, and people would be able to look it up. I don't know that we need to necessarily put it on the website, but I think it should be available to people. So I don't see that as a negative thing, I don't think it's anything bad that, that Healthcare Access is doing. By providing this service, a lot of people will get the ability to run, get motivated to run ahead of time. We're encouraging that, that as the city commission. So I don't look at it as a negative thing that it's a for-profit group that's running it for them, because it is the proceeds for a nonprofit. People want to criticize them for doing that, I'd say let them do it, but I don't think from a business sense makes good idea for Healthcare Access to run it because they have no expertise. So I would be for some type of transparency, just very simple, keep it as simple as we can, and just have people ask, direct the staff to create a, create a method where when they want us to waive fees, that they do so, and they provide certain amount of data, that it can be judged that it is for a nonprofit, and it's reasonable.
David, what have, what have the costs been in the past to operate this event?
I don't know if we've got it. It's probably, I don't know, you got, you got that?
The estimated donated services for this year's event are approximately $8,200, 20 Lawrence Fire Medical and Lawrence Police Department.
Okay.
The real cost to the city.
I, I guess the big thing that I see here is, is that, you know, I've supported this, the half marathon, the last, I don't know, how long have you all been doing it? And there is a cost involved. We do provide services, that's what we do, and we do a pretty dang good job at it. One of the things is, is that our responsibility here is to make sure that people are safe as visitors and as residents to our community in any type of event like this. Is this an item, you know, that warrants a stronger look? Possibly. I, I mean, you know, Bob, I guess I didn't hear from, you know, the same folks that you did today. You know, I, I think that the truth of the matter is, is that a lot of these people probably spend, you know, that much in sales tax that day by coming and visiting, you know, restaurants and everything else in Lawrence, Kansas, but the big thing here that I see is, is that this is an event that, that we have supported. There is a cost involved, is the cost involved in the services that we provide on a regular basis? Is this an important event? Where's $35,000 that we're not having to look up, or, you know, go through our process during budget time of trying to fund Healthcare Access? So I think that this is an amount of money to, it is an amount of money to pay, but it's for the services that we do best, so I would continue to be in support. If we want to look at a later date, you know, and, and opportunity of, and having a general discussion about the examination of these events that come before the city commission, and maybe a better way of outlining what that transparency ought to look like, that's fine, but I'm not sure that we start it tonight. Bob, I appreciate you raising the, the question tonight, but I'm, I'm not sure that we pick Healthcare Access as the, the group that we hit first, so.
Mayor, one thing I would point out is, is that here towards the end of the year, what we do is we ask the departments what their costs have been related to these types of events, whether it's been basketball, football, the running events, the horse parade, all of those things where in many cases, we've donated services, and then we present usually that tally to you, and then we, we have funds in the guest tax fund, we then make an allocation from the guest tax fund, or essentially reimburse the general fund where our police officers, firefighters, and public works department salaries are paid for. So here towards the end of the year, you're going to get an opportunity to, to see all of that again anyway, and you can see the, the magnitude of the, of the dollars and the different events, and if you desire to change your practice or policy, we'll obviously take your direction on that.
Is it appropriate at that time to look at that as a regular agenda item?
Well, no, I'm going to stick with it. I think, I'll make a motion just for the financial report part, but that fails, then we'll do it at a later date. If, if it goes, then it goes, and then we can approve the other, if that would be all right.
Sure.
Well, ready?
Yeah, let's, let's do it this way, let's, let's make a motion to approve the street permit event, and you can do it as an amendment, is that okay? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Okay, then I would entertain a motion then to approve the street event permit for the Kansas Half Marathon and 5K, and for the closure of various streets in downtown throughout City Lawrence, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Sunday, November 2nd, and also with the waiver of the fees to be charged for the services, city services provided.
Moved.
Okay. We have a motion made in second for approval. Bob, you want to make a mo, no, you make the motion to...
I, I knew that we amend that original motion by suggesting, by saying that any organization that receives a waiver of police and fire and medical and other city services needs to submit a financial report after the event's over showing the gross sales, the expenses, and the amount returned to the charity.
Okay. Okay, that is an amendment, a motion for amendment to the original motion. Is there a second? I'll second that so that we can have a vote. Any other questions or comment on that item?
Mayor, are we going to, I thought we were going to try to do a comprehensive, are we just creating this rule from, is this rule going to be in place if we approve this right now? Okay.
Do you want it as, I'm sorry, I, I did not understand. I'm thinking...
Because he said all charity events.
Are you talking from, from tonight forward?
Yes.
Okay, then I would, I'll take back my second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to address it as a...
Yeah, we're going to address it towards the end of the year as, as the lump sum.
For 2015.
Okay. Okay, so that motion dies for lack of a second. That was made by Commissioner Shum on the amendment. Now, the original motion to approve the street event was made by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Shum?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving a right-of-way permit for First Construction LLC to partially close a portion of the 800 block, New Hampshire Street, and to partially close the 200 block of East Ninth Street for a 24-month period for the construction of a building on the northeast corner of the intersection of Ninth and New Hampshire Street.
Good evening again, Mayor, Commissioners, excuse me. Mark Teal, Public Works Department. First Construction has requested a right-of-way permit to allow the construction of their building, their proposed building, at the northeast corner of Ninth and New Hampshire. As part of that construction, they have some requirements to block portions of our right-of-way, which include Ninth Street and New Hampshire Street, and the public alley between Rhode Island and New Hampshire Street to adequately and safely perform the construction means and practices to erect their building. We had two meetings with affected property owners in the area. We had a meeting here at City Hall, and then we had a meeting on-site last Friday with adjacent businesses and property owners. It was a good meeting, and we came up with some changes to the original plan that was submitted by First Construction, which would have allowed only southbound traffic for the duration of the request, which is a 24-month, not to exceed 24 months. During that discussion, we were able to figure out a way to allow north-south traffic on New Hampshire for the duration of the project, except for times when they have construction sequencing that would require either the northbound lane to be partially closed, or the entire northbound and southbound lanes to be closed. For example, when they, the city has required them to construct a new water line from Eighth Street to Ninth Street, that water line is under the southbound driving lane of New Hampshire. So, in order to do that, they will have to close both north and southbound traffic. They have estimated that closure to be approximately two to three weeks, depending on what type of conditions they encounter once they begin the excavation. So, that's an example of a time when the two lanes wouldn't be available. But the general practice with the way that we've lined this out will allow for traffic, an 11-foot lane north and 11-foot lane southbound. And then to accommodate that, we have from the crosswalk, the mid-block crosswalk, south to Ninth Street, that will be no parking. So, there's about eight existing parking stalls that will go away as, as part of this request during construction. Then on Ninth Street, they will, the construction on the southeast corner will be concluded before this permit is, or before they're allowed to do any of the construction, traffic control sequencing. They will move traffic south on Ninth Street, and then they'll still be allowed to have one lane east and one lane west during the entire time. They do not anticipate any changes to that for the duration of their project. Then the alley will be closed. If you can see, they own this lot here that is currently being used for staging for the project, what the city and, and everybody's been calling the South Project. They will continue to use that for staging for this project. So, their construction fence is approximately this orange line, outline, which would allow the building occupants here to access the alley from the south and their parking here, but not to continue on north through the alley. Then the alley would be closed approximately this location, which is about the back end of the parking spaces here, which are in a city 10-hour parking lot. Those go away for the duration of the project as well. So, those are the closures that will take place with this project. As part of that meeting with the property owners and the businesses, those folks that are in this building that utilize, whose patrons utilize a lot of this on-street parking here, as a compromise, they had requested, and we are requesting you tonight, to consider allowing these seven spaces on the south of our lot to be signed as reserved parking Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the businesses located in that building. They will still be metered and limited to two-hour parking, so the patrons would continue to pay, would just give them a substitute place to park rather than the on-street parking that would be going away. Also, during that meeting, we met with the Lawrence Farmers Market. They had some concerns. They utilize this lot here and this lot to the north of the construction site in terms of getting in and out with their vendors and for the general public to have access during their farmer market hours. We have agreed to work with them to figure out the best way for vendor access, for ADA access, and other things, and we'll continue to work with them as, as their market remains open through the, pretty much the end of this November, and then when they come back in the spring to reopen in terms of getting access. Also, the parking lots here, this parking lot number four on the west side and the parking lot on the east side, 10-hour lot there and two-hour on the west, the stipulations that the city has requested from First Construction is that access to those parking lots be available throughout the duration of the project, regardless of how many lanes of traffic are closed. So, when they do the water line, and they have both north and southbound lanes of New Hampshire closed, they will have to maintain a minimum of one access point to these parking lots. And we've also, during that meeting, we established a notification list with the businesses and the property owners. We have phone numbers and emails. I will be sharing that with First Construction. The city will have that as well. First Management, First Construction has made a promise to us that they will do their best to coordinate with those property owners as additional phases of construction and impacts change throughout the project. I will tell you, on the South Project, they've done a nice job whenever downtown events or downtown businesses have come to them and asked for consideration for something on Saturday, or a special need that they have, pulling the fence back, or doing different various items that have come up. City staff has worked with First Construction and been able to accommodate most of those requests throughout the project. Tonight, your action items are to approve a right-of-way permit for the construction of the building to not, not exceed 24 months, to, with the condition that the permit be, the right-of-way permit be issued with the building permit that the planning department will issue them, so that the construction sequencing would begin along with that same process, and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't run the risk of having lane closures for demolition, and then a period of time lapse with no activity with the disruption to the traffic. So, I think that's, that's a good fix to that solution. Brandon Rapp with First Construction is here as well. He's the permit applicant. But that will stand for questions. Oh, I'm sorry, you have one other action item tonight, and that's to authorize city to sign these seven spaces, to reserve them by name of the businesses located in this business here on the, in this property on the northwest corner of Ninth and New Hampshire.
Mark, the water line that's going to come down New Hampshire Street, is that going to be, the fencing and all going to be similar to what happened to the water line project that was up on Massachusetts Street?
Brandon, you might be, Brandon might be able to answer that, but they will, basically, my understanding is the fence where it's currently shown on the map will just move west all the way to the curb line, which would allow the sidewalk to be open, but no street access. Is that correct?
Okay, and then the, and so then the, the entrances into the parking lot on the west side of the 800 block, one side, one of those entrances is going to be open at all times?
Yes, they, they've been required to sequencing, sequence the water line construction so that while they've got one entrance closed, one's open, and then they'll have to get the pavement restored, and then move to the second phase to make sure that they're open.
Okay, and then the, the second question we talked about yesterday in the agenda meeting, where's the construction workers going to park?
Yes, thank you. I've neglected to mention that. As you see on the map here, First Management, the, the, one of the other compromises that was asked is, can we not have contractor and subcontractor parking in that lot? First Management has agreed to make that a stipulation of their staff and their subs to not park there, and to, and try to, as best as they can, enforce that when they know vendors are there. The city has agreed to sign both entrances to that lot that will say no construction parking.
Okay, and, but you'll make sure that they understand that that's just not, not going to be there, so.
And we, and also, we had talked about some other locations for them to park. We will work with First Management to identify places for their workers to park so they don't just bleed into the neighborhoods and create another problem there for us as well.
Okay, well, I definitely think, you know, the, the parking assigned to, you know, the small businesses there on the corner of Ninth and New Hampshire on the northwest corner is an appropriate deal, but it seemed to me if all the construction guys would be parked in the rest of the parking lot, it didn't do anybody any good, so I'm glad you're on top of that. Bob, you had a question first?
Well, I'm sure someone's thought about this, but there's another parking lot that the bank owns at Rhode Island and Ninth Street, northeast corner. Have we talked about trying to procure that space on a temporary basis for the replacement of some of the parking we're going to lose? It looks like we're going to lose about 17 spaces on this footprint, or that, that parking lot could be used for the construction workers. It can be leased from US Bank.
I don't know if First Construction has done that yet. Robert Green is also here, I noted, from First Management. That lot is currently used for overflow parking for the farmer's market on Thursdays, Thursdays for the farmer's market, Tuesdays and Saturdays? Tuesdays and Saturdays.
Well, we secured that, that property before as part of one of the last agreements that we did, so.
Is there about 20, some spaces in there, I think?
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't. My map doesn't, but it's, it's this lot right here, Commissioner.
Correct.
Brandon Rapp with First Construction, no, we don't, we don't intend to use that lot over there at all. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Can you contact the owner?
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, well, let me, let me be clear here. Construction vehicles are going to park somewhere, and we want to be careful not to have them parking in the neighborhood or in the general public lot.
Correct.
And so, where is it that they would park now unless you had another lot?
In working with Mark, we've talked about on the other side of the river, or clear out at, used to be Tanger Outlet Mall, out by I-70. What we can do additionally is sticker, furnish ID stickers for all the vehicles, so if they do start to filter into the downtown neighborhoods, we'll know who they are, so we can rectify that right away.
My, my experience with construction is they carry a lot of tools with them, and they want to be close to their tools, so.
Right. It'll be a fight, but it's something that we can definitely work through.
Okay, so if you're not interested in that lot, could we not ask if the city can procure it on a short-term basis for the 17 spaces we're going to lose? I mean, it's going to get congested there with the construction activity, and...
Wait, sorry.
Go ahead.
We, we can talk, I think it's US Bank's lot.
Yeah.
And they did work with us on the farmer's market overflow, and we can, we can talk to them, see what their plans are for that, for that lot. We can make that part of the conversation. We don't, we don't control it.
No, I understand. And I think even though it's farmer market, the farmer market overflow lot, the more parking that we can find in the area, it helps the farmer's market as well, it helps everybody. So, we're going to lose 17 spaces, it looks like, and, you know, if we can pick up another 20 or so in the area, that, that'd be pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, I got Terry first.
I, I have two quick questions. Other than closing the entire street for the water line, do you anticipate in closing the, closing the entire street for other reasons?
Not the entire street. Most likely, just, just half of it where the construction project is.
Okay.
Up, up, it would go up to the crosswalk and, and south down to Ninth Street.
This is more for the city. The seven spots that are there will, I'm sure, will be delineated. Somebody puts their money in, walks out, and goes to the other areas of the city, and don't go into those businesses, what are we going to do?
That's...
We'll see enforcement. What if they don't follow the signs? Do we have any responsibilities for those companies? Is somebody going to tell them, or just going to put that sign there? I don't want us to get in an argument with people, citizens of Lawrence, but at the same time, what, what, what are we going to do?
Commissioner, I think our thought is, is that most parkers, most citizens will probably respect that. Those that don't, we really don't have a very good mechanism to, to deal with that.
But I just don't want the companies to expect us to come up and enforce something.
Could be an honor system type of situation, it'd be my... I suppose we could probably get more sophisticated, but that would be something we traditionally have done in this situation.
Commissioner, at our meeting on Friday, that was expressed to those businesses that it would be a kind of an on-your honor to respect those signs, and there's not really any way the city can enforce it, so they did understand that.
And I, and I would assume that most would. Okay, thank you.
Chair.
That, that kind of got my question.
Kind of got it, okay. And so, then again, during the time of the water line, and even though there's going to be one entrance open on the west side, then the west side parking lot at all times?
Yes.
On the east side, the, the parking lot that's just north of the side here where the farmer's market is on Saturday, that's going to have to be closed, correct?
I don't know that they've decided how exactly to come past that entrance onto New Hampshire, but that parking lot has access from the alley off of Eighth Street, and also through the, this parking lot here off of Rhode Island. So, there's in essence, three access points to that parking lot. We will try to work with First Management to make sure, to try to sequencing the water line so that they at least have half of that access onto New Hampshire, but I'm not sure if that's...
Okay, well, okay, timing-wise of this water line, when do you expect to do this?
We anticipate to do that right at the beginning of the project.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do, what date does the farmer's market close? What's their last day?
December 22nd.
December 22nd.
November 22nd.
Okay. So, is there a way that...
First of all, see you, huh?
Yeah, okay, because we don't have the planes or anything like that, is there, you know, here, here would be my plan. Let's have it done after they close and before they open in the spring. Is that right?
And I think they open, open back up in April.
Yeah, so that takes care of the problem of the access on the street there, plus all of the employees in the public parking that's there during the rest of the time, I think is important, so that takes care of that. That ought to be a condition of the deal, that it's done during that timeframe, okay? Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, hold on just a minute. Any other conditions that we might want to bring up at this time before we go to public comment? before we go to public comment?
I just think it's important to say that there's, we're still getting emails from people telling us not to shut down New Hampshire Street completely, and so I want to remind folks of that. We're not shutting down both lanes and New Hampshire Street for two years. We've, I'm still getting emails about that this afternoon, so that's not the plan.
You know, Mark's, Mark's done a very good job of working out a plan where we're going to have two-way traffic. The only thing is, is that we do this water line as part of this project, or we do it, we do it on our own because it's going to have to be done as Mr. Wagner said yesterday, correct? Because it's been, it's been looked at for quite a while as being something that has to happen. And so that's going to cause...
We like, we like the cost of them doing it.
That's true. So anyway, that's the deal where we are right now. So there is going to be a time, Vice Mayor, that, you know, as you bring up, people still talking, we're going to have to deal with that water line, so anyway. Okay, thank you. Don't go away. Public comment. Sir, you got a comment? I got... Well, you can be after him then.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is John Pendleton, and I am here as a member of the Lawrence Farmers Market Board. We all understand the Lawrence Farmers Market will be affected by the construction of this new building, as we are already affected by the current construction. We will lose market vendor stalls, have a decrease in customer parking, and an increase in the difficulty of the general access to the farmer's market. Personally, my farm's booth space will be one of the eight vendor stalls taken by the construction footprint, but I am comfortable with the proposed plans the market has made to assure us the vendors that are dislocated with a guaranteed spot at the market. The proplong, the proposed lane closures and the elimination of street parking during the construction of the new, new building will, of course, make our customer parking more of a challenge. Whether this challenge is real or perceived, the general public will most assuredly see it as real. We would like to ask the city and the First Construction and First Management to help in the marketing of the farmer's market and the neighboring businesses during the construction, this construction time. It may also be a perfect time to discuss enhancements to the lot, which has been the home of the Lawrence Farmers Market for quite some time. We, the members of the Lawrence Farmers Market, look forward to the completion of the building. In discussions with First Management, they have pledged permanent restrooms and a storage closet for the farmer's market. We imagine the building will be as much asset to our farmer's market as we are to their, to their new tenants. With that said, we ask that all involved to maintain the quickest and safest timeline to complete the project. To keep this brief, so we can get back to watching the Royals and try some of the new local sweet potato beer that has just been released at Free State just today, the Lawrence Farmers Market hopes to continue to have an open conversation with First Construction and the City of Lawrence as the project develops and would even suggest possibly monthly discussions with all the parties involved. Thank you.
John, thank you. Yes, sir. And, and then you can go next, okay?
I'm Jose Lopez, and I'm coming from Cerveterito. Then the water line, I think, is on a sidewalk. It's now on the south, something on the street. It's on a sidewalk because a couple years ago, the, the water line broke, and, and it was right there by, by the tree. And I don't know, you, you guys had to close the sidewalk too, or for three weeks, or?
I don't believe so. I think we're planning on leaving all the sidewalk open, but you're talking, what we're talking about, the water line is the big water main that's under the street. It, it's not your individual line that, that comes up to your building. Is that, is that the one that you were talking about?
Well, we saw the, we saw a big pipe running through the sidewalk, so I don't know if it's the same one, or, or it's a different one. But it broke right there, and they had to adapt the new...
Well, I tell you what, we'll ask so that we can get a straight answer to that one, okay?
Okay. And do, do we have a allowance to get water somewhere else, like?
You're always going to have water, correct?
What we do is we keep the existing water line in, in service. New water line is built, tie-ins are made, so there is a little bit of a disruption in service. We try and do that with adequate notice so that you complain in the business, and then we also try and do it when it doesn't impact your business. So the number of different things will be part of that, that tie over to the new water line. But, but the disruption that will occur will be measured in hours.
And one more question. Can they keep both lanes open during the weekend? So can have more traffic? If they have to, you know, work from Sunday to Thursday and, and leave it open for the weekend?
I think the goal is to have the two lanes open at, at any time, except for when we're doing the water line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So only during the time that we have the water line, you're still going to have access to the parking lot that's just to the south of you, you know, from the north end or from the south end. So one of those, one of those openings is going to be there, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Walker. I am the owner of The Fix Salon at 845 New Hampshire. So we are one of those businesses on the corner that they were talking about is going to be directly related to the loss of the parking and the streets. So we talked, I know the plan that they submitted to you tonight is much different than what they were going to do before we met with them on Friday. I appreciate Mark and Brandon for meeting with us and hearing our concerns because they took everything we were saying into consideration. I know Mr. Shum was talking about the fact that he, he believed it was 17 parking spots. I think it's probably even a little bit more than that, because directly across the street from us, in the northbound lane on the north side of the street, yeah, the, the northbound lane on East Second Street, those were all five-hour meter parking spots as well. So we're losing all of those on that side of the street. So we would really appreciate your consideration in marking those spots for us. Yes, we do realize that not everybody is on the honor system and will obey the signs, but this at least gives us a better chance. You're saying that you're getting emails today. Still, we have clients calling, you know, concerned about how they're going to access us and be able to reach us. So it would be great for us to be able to tell them, don't worry, the roads are going to be open. We will have designated parking for you. In my business, being a salon, accessibility is everything, as it is for most businesses, and if they can have the construction workers parking elsewhere, that will be a great help as well. And we appreciate too that as soon as they can move the fences back, that would be great. And notification, we were not notified of any of this going on, that it was going to start up immediately until we all read about it in the newspaper. So if we can know right away when the waters, the roads are going to be shut for the water, that would be great. That way we have an opportunity to tell our clients and the people coming in. Another thing that was suggested at that meeting, which would be great, is putting signs on some of the fencing or whatever that our businesses, even though the roads are closed, are still open for business. We're not going to be closed just because of the construction.
Okay.
So thank you so much for your time and your consideration on this.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. Other comment? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Sherri Voden. I own Z's Divine Espresso at 10 East Ninth Street. And I just also want to say I'm very grateful that they have, we have found an alternative to the just permanent street closing, but I also just want to emphasize that any street closing, whether it's a partial closing or full closing, or a week or a month or a year, really severely impacts our businesses. And the closures that we've had on South New Hampshire since the hotel's been under construction, I can show you by the day that those streets closed, what that did to my business, and have suffered severe revenue losses during the construction of the hotel at Ninth and New Hampshire. And now to know that we're going to be going through this for another potential two years is really, I'll just say, kind of frightening, because quite frankly, if we have the kind of impact we've had with the current construction project, I'm not sure we'll be there in two years. I mean, it's, it's that dramatic. People don't like to come into an area that's under construction. The debris, the dirt, the noise, everything that goes with a construction project is really a negative to the surrounding businesses. So I don't know that anything can be done about all that, but I just, just want everybody to be aware, as I know you are, that this is the third major construction company on one intersection that all of the businesses around there have had to deal with and endure and try to hang in there, because we know it's going to be good in the end. We're all excited about the eventual conclusion of these projects or what they bring to the downtown area, but we're really impacted in the meantime with people avoiding that area because of all the construction. So the parking lot and the two-way streets will be a, a big help. Just need to really work together to make sure that we can maintain our businesses while this hopefully last project takes place.
So we need to buy more coffee?
Absolutely.
There you go.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Other comment? Okay, back to the commission. And I do want to, I do want to tell everybody, and Lynn especially, you and I share the same kind of business.
Yes.
And, and, and here we are, and, and we do understand the impact any time that, that, you know, traffic routes are changed and parking's taken away, and there's fences put up and all that fun stuff. I know Commissioner Shum and I and, and other commissioners have had businesses where fences have been for like all summer and, and, and all that good stuff, and, and it is an impact. So, you know, we'll, we'll look after you, make sure everybody gets through, okay?
Proceed.
Okay, and I'll make sure all those girls that work for me buy a lot more coffee, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Boss? One question from the applicant. One of the speakers asks that on all weekends, both directions be open. Is that something that you have, you can certify that that will happen? Could you come back up to the podium, answer that question?
That's, that's not something that, that we could make happen due to the, due to the crane and the, and the construction equipment that are going to be parked there on that street adjacent to the construction site.
So there may be some weekends where there's one lane closed?
There, there could be some times where we could open them up for events like we've done over at the Marriott, but for the most part, that'll have to remain closed due to, due to crane activity that'll be parked there in that, in that lane.
Okay, so I didn't want anyone to leave with the wrong idea here tonight that, you know, we're going to have two-way traffic, correct?
Still got two-way traffic.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, it's, we can't, we're not going to be able to pull it back and open it back up, but yes.
I'm Robert with First Management. You'll always have the two lanes through the weekends.
Even during the water line construction?
No, that is the only time that you won't have the two lanes, is during the water line. That will be, you know, and that, depending on scheduling, you know, that may affect one weekend, possibly two weekends. We think it's going to take two to three weeks to do the water line.
That was the other question I was going to ask. What's the projected, projected amount of time it takes to put the water line in?
Yeah, we're, we're estimating it's going to take two to three weeks. So there may be two, maybe three weekends that, that part of that will have to be closed, but 95% of the time, you'll have two-lane traffic.
Okay.
Down that street.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
I don't have a question. I just, it's, it's nice to see when the First Construction and the city staff can get an agreement that people are happy with, I think reasonably happy with considering that this construction. So I congratulate both areas on getting something that allows traffic to get through there in both ways, except for the time that the, the water line is put in. So that's, that's a nice thing to see that the public made a point. It was responded to, and now we have something that works.
Well, there's the other thing to consider too, I think, is that there's going to be more people in the area eventually who are going to drink coffee, need haircuts, and buy vegetables. So, you know, long-term, it's a win-win-win situation. I know it's difficult, but we've, we've gone through it before with the water line replacement through the whole downtown, and it's, it's amazing how resilient people are to construction as long as they know it's moving along, it's going, they're going to be accommodated. And no, it's difficult, but they do, they do hang around. They do get things done.
We're very fortunate in our business and in the coffee business, people, people go out of their way to come see us, so we're very fortunate that way. But anyway, Dave, one of the things that's important here, I think, too, is that the timing of this project of when this fencing can begin. I mean, we don't have building permits or anything like that have been issued. When is the appropriate time when fencing can go up and, and all that happen? Because I don't want to have a project that's going to start, you know, with a fence, but there's not going to be any activity. I just don't want to do that for people.
Brandon and Robert need to speak to this, but it'd be, I think it's staff's recommendation that the, the fencing and any lane closures and the convenience that we're going to experience doesn't start until, you know, the, the week or just a few days before actual demolition and then construction starts. We don't want a situation where the fencing is up and nothing happens.
Right. Please come up.
Yeah, we, we understand with conversations with Mark that the, we'll be able to put the fence up when we're issued the building permit. So as soon as we have the building permits, when we'll start. I mean, the fence won't be up there before we have the building permit from the city.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Tim? Okay. So then the recommendation then is for the approval of the right-of-way permit for First Construction to partially close a portion of the 800 block of New Hampshire Street and partially close a 200 block of East Ninth Street for a 24-month period for the construction of building on the northeast corner, the intersection of Ninth Street and New Hampshire Street with the right-of-way permit being issued with the approved building permit. So that, that takes into consideration that the thought that nothing can happen, the fencing can't happen until that approved building permit. And also to approve the reserved parking for seven spaces in the city parking lot number four, the southernmost area of the parking lot for the business located building on the northwest corner of Ninth Street and New Hampshire Street, Monday to Friday, 8 to 5. Okay? And...
Do we want to include in that direct staff to try and procure the parking spaces at Ninth and Rhode Island?
We can do that.
Understood that that was one of the things we wanted to work on as well.
And also to work out the necessary language on the construction workers' parking and also possible signage along the fence that can be taken care of by these guys.
Direct people to retailers, right.
Yeah, and then also the question of marketing for the farmer's market. You guys can assist with that, correct? Those heads going up and down, right? From First Management and First Construction?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we'll add that as an additional deal too. Okay? Anything else? Okay, entertain a motion with those conditions added, okay?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes 5-0. Thank you all very much. Next item is consider a request to revise the preliminary development plan for Here, Kansas, located 1101 and 1115 Indiana Street, to reduce total parking spaces provided for the project from 683 to 583, and all 100 spaces requested to be removed are located within the onsite parking structure and to affirm staff's interpretation of the plan, that the structure complies with the maximum height allowed per zoning district. This day.
Good evening. Excuse me. We, we met last night at the planning commission. He had a question and got the dates of the meetings mixed up, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sandy Day. We are here to talk about the Here project. You've seen much of this information presented to you previously, so we'll try to be very brief and address very specific items. The two things that staff is looking for direction and action... and action on this evening, one would be review and approval of staff's interpretation for the overall height, and then to address the applicant's request for reduction in the off-street parking. This slide just summarized the project as it's been approved to date with the number of beds, units. The on-street parking has shifted a little bit as we look at public improvement plans that have been submitted and the final development plan that has actually been submitted. Excuse me. There we go. The project includes three commercial areas in a multi-story building. This is a mixed-use building as well. The first part of this request is the affirmation of staff's interpretation of the overall height of the project. The project includes a fair amount of topographic change across the site, both east and west and north and south. The highest point of this project is 89 feet. That's located on that northwest corner. This slide shows you the difference in the calculation of the permitted height and the way staff has interpreted it. What we did was, in the staff report and the original interpretation, the review was to look at that 12-foot setback that is allowed in the PD, one foot for each additional setback. The building is set back, and this building has a lot of undulation around it. We looked at the overall changes in that building facade. The average setback is 17 feet, nine inches. So, we use that average to get us to the 84 feet. That would be the overall permitted height. And as we saw on the previous slide, three of those four corners complies with that. That northwest corner is slightly above that. It's a very short duration of that piece of the facade, and we are requesting that you follow staff's interpretation that this is compliant with the intent of the Development Code. The applicant's request is to reduce the off-street parking by 100 spaces. This will, all of these spaces will be within the garage. At our last meeting, you asked staff to follow up with some additional information, which we have summarized in your packets tonight, and I'll go very quickly over tonight. We reviewed the off-street parking requirements for various local developments that, locally. We also have a review of the KU student parking demands, as well as an assessment of additional university communities' parking. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the mouse for some reason. There we go. With regard to the local development projects, for the most part, our local projects either meet or exceed our current parking requirement. To be able to do an assessment of the actual demand would require a survey of every one of those individual properties, probably multiple trips, and that's just not data that we have access to. If you look at aerials, you can see that some parking lots do in fact have some vacancies. Don't know how much of that is related to any vacancies that may also exist in those projects. We looked at three areas of high-density multifamily development. We looked at areas right around the university, looked at the areas south of the university and areas to the west of the university. This slide summarizes what you have in your packets. In this particular sample, we looked at 18 specific addresses. The total number of units was over 1,200, total number of bedrooms was over 2,600. With the exception of five projects in this area, all of these projects met or exceeded the parking requirements. The Oriad was granted a variance to have some reduced parking. Indiana and Mississippi Streets are projects that did not meet those requirements, but I could not fully determine why. Naismith Hall predates the current code. It is also adjacent to university property and can park either in KU parking lots or may have additional parking in the neighborhood. This slide just shows the two other areas that we surveyed. Again, we only looked at very high-density developments, both to the south of the campus and to the west of the campus. All of these projects met or exceeded the off-street parking requirements. That was something that we expected to find. It bore out in what we found. And looking at that, they're more remote from the campus, and therefore, we expect that there probably is more driving back and forth. The KU parking data, this is also in your packet. Jayhawk, Jayhawker Towers was the facility that is most similar to the Here project, and based on that information, we looked at what the sophomore through senior populations are obtaining parking permits. That's about 71%. And if that holds true for the Here project, we did a parking summary of what that would look like, and it does follow with the applicant's request to reduce that parking. This is just that same summary where the Jayhawker Towers is located in relationship to the campus and to the Oriad neighborhood, that table from the parking data that was provided from KU, in terms of who is seeking permits. When we looked at and contacted other communities and what their requirements are regarding high-density development, what we found was that it varies widely from community to community. For three and four-bedroom units, that average was about two and a half parking spaces for a three-bedroom apartment. Many communities varied whether or not there were other overlay districts, whether they were mixed-use, whether they were adjacent to downtown, whether they had specific policies that were trying to remove parking from those areas and compensating by providing a very extensive type of public transportation. This is the parking table, the way it looks both with what's been approved to date, as well as what it would look like if we reduced the residential portion of the Here project by 71%, or based on 71% of the occupants, having a place to park within the project. That brings that total residential parking to 461 spaces. We add that to the non-residential use within that project, and we have total required parking of 539 spaces if the applicant is allowed to reduce that requirement. The project would then provide 477 spaces in the smaller garage, provide the 107 or so spaces on street, for a total project of 584 total spaces in this immediate area. Your action options this evening are to consider the applicant's request for that parking reduction and to affirm staff's interpretation of the building height, or to provide us direction how you would prefer that height to be considered. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Sandy?
Do you have an elevation of that building at hand?
Not on hand, I'm sorry.
You want the corner, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, just the corners, that I can show you.
That's where the elevation question is, right?
Yes.
It's the north...
It's just...
East. Sorry, across from the stadium, right?
Yes.
Southeast corner of 11th and Mississippi.
It's the lowest point on the site.
Right.
And it's just for a short duration here and here where that height occurs. It starts coming down because you're going up the...
It's a move uphill. But it's not higher than the rest of the building in terms of the carpet plain?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yeah. Jim, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'll be brief. I know everyone wants to see the game. A couple of comments with regard to cities, the staff's report. Obviously, it's very thorough, but a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. Again, I just want to, any kind of analysis or comparison to other local developments takes in, doesn't take into consideration that the fact that this is a very unique mixed-use project. We've talked about that a lot. So, there is no precedent as it relates to this. I understand that you're getting comments from other developers and things, and I look at your, I look at your long use, your land plan, long-term land plan, and I find a hard place to find anywhere where you can get this kind of density anywhere in this neighborhood. This is truly an unprecedented project that will not have an equal or a replication of it. So, a vote for us is not a vote for anything else, because if another person can find a project that can put 624 beds and two and a half acres in the right spot that has all that public transportation and road improvements there, I think they should get a parking reduction, but I don't think that exists. The other thing that I want to make sure that is, wasn't really articulated in the staff's report, is the actual unit mix, which I think is very germane to the discussion. If you recall, staff's report said, you know, other communities with larger units have other qualifications for the bed-to-parking ratio. 70% of our 624 beds either fall within a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom. If you can, is that too small for you guys to read? I do have paper versions if it is. Or can you read it on your own screens, or would it be helpful if I gave you a paper copy?
Yeah, if you have one, that'd be great.
Is it okay if I approach you? So, if we just kind of run through the numbers, you can see that, you know, we can accommodate our 56 bedrooms with 100% coverage. We can cover our two-bedroom units with 100% coverage. And then our three-bedroom units, we can cover with two and a half spots for, you know, for a three-bedroom unit. And then the remainder, our four-bedroom units, is 2.52 that will allow for the 477 and the 624 beds. So, if you look at it from a logical perspective, the most expensive units in the building are the one- and two-bedroom. Obviously, the more bedrooms in a unit, they're sharing more common space. The kitchen area and the living rooms are the same size, are virtually the same size. So, it's, you're sharing more common space. It came to my attention, too, in the staff comments, looking at your 2006 coordinates, that you had like one and a half parks for a one-bedroom. I never really made it clear, but you can certainly put on the record that our leases will not allow any more than one person per bed. So, per bedroom, it's single-unit occupancy in any bedroom. So, a one car for a one-bedroom, that's all that would be allowed in the apartment. And we, you know, so we will only have 624 residents. We're not going to allow two kids to share a bedroom. That's just not... So, our four-bedroom unit has four bedrooms. There's going to be one person in each bedroom. Is that fair?
Oh, yeah.
There's no room for double-dipping and increasing the amount of demand per building. That would be a violation of their lease. So, if we just take the line item, because the majority of units, as you can see, almost 59% of the units are four-bedroom units, I just kind of said, okay, well, what does the numbers look even within that category itself? And if you look at it even further, you can say, well, we can accommodate, you know, roughly 14% and 100% of those units. Oops. And another 24%, you know, at a 75% level. And remaining 50% at this, you know, basically two to one. The overall ratio, though, for the whole building, if you look at it that way, is for every unit, one, two, three, or four bedroom, we have two spaces. So, you can slice and dice this a lot of different ways, but if you actually look at the numbers, it's very symmetrical. Trust me, our lenders have looked at this very thoroughly. I mean, they have the most at risk here, and it's their experience that tells them that this line item is a total waste of money in a project that is fraught with huge amounts of risk because of its sheer size, the amount of money is involved, and the fact that it's so unprecedented. So, they're saying, well, there's so much risk here. We know there won't be this kind of demand here. We know it's a waste of money. We don't want a project that's not efficient. So, that's kind of the uphill battle that we find ourselves in. So, then, as it relates to staff's report, as it relates to the density, obviously, as we know, the neighborhood plan called for density here. Density is a good thing. It's a green idea. It provides a sense of community, not only for the neighborhood, but for the university in terms of a lot of pedestrian traffic. When there's density, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, because they can walk to downtown, they can walk to class. The nature of this type of project, and that's why it's not apples-to-apples, is the cost structure is completely different, as was evidenced by Commissioner Dever last time we met. You can't just go out and buy another acre here and just asphalt it and put the 100 spots in like so many, the vast majority of the other projects that were prepared to, and could do and did do. So, the site is also what was, because in the neighborhood plan, it was selected because it was on the edge of the neighborhood. It's very specific to where they wanted the density, as close to the university as possible. So, as we, as developers trying to anticipate leasing demand, we know that we've got 76% parking ratio for our residents, 477 spots for 624 beds. So, what happens to those other spaces? Well, we know there won't be the demand there. We've also created a situation where we've put 108, you know, the staff's report was referring to our old plan, and there was some question as to whether that number would actually be reduced. It actually went up one space. We went up, we submitted our public improvement plans, and when we got to that level of detail, we were actually able to find one more space, and we actually have 108 spaces, one more than was represented in the staff's report, just because of new information since the last meeting. So, we've insulated the entire project with metered public parking. So, our residents won't be able to park there and stay there overnight or for more than several hours, two hours at a time. So, they're not going to be able to park there. And if you're all familiar with the area, they can't park, you know, at the stadium, so they're going to have to go the other side of the stadium. Or if you go to the east or the south, you've got more university parking, so there's a lot of permit parking if they want to buy a permit. Or if you go east, there's tremendous topography. So, these kids are faced with a choice. Well, if I really want my car here, this place isn't for me, because my car, they're out of spaces, is, I'm going to park it four or five blocks away. The kids won't, they won't do that. They'll go somewhere else where the parking is easier, and then we'll lease it to someone who doesn't need his car. That's just the way the market will actually self-correct, because we've made a situation where if you want your car so bad and we're out of spots, it'll either say, if you have a car and you want to live here, you sign right-of-way, or if you wait and we run out of spots, you're out of luck, and you're parking your car four or five blocks away. How convenient is that? I'd say this place is not for me. So, we know statistically that we're okay. The other communities, too, they also, the staff's report referenced special standards for mixed-use downtown areas and edge of campus. Also, last time, one of the commissioners mentioned, you know, downtown, you're familiar with making parking exceptions there. This is your first mixed-use project. It's the same level of thinking. And there's a reason why these other communities have elected to have special standards for these areas, because if you don't, if you say one-to-one in mixed-use projects, you're basically saying no to mixed-use projects. They just don't work. They don't pencil. I think that was brought up last time, that when the MU district was created, there was really no really study of the parking that was associated with it. You just kind of put on what was there for everyone else, created a new district without not a lot of consideration as to what the parking requirements in a real-world situation actually look like. The other thing is, you know, staff referenced, you know, there's, most communities have a lot of reduction for parking near mass transit. KU, and I represented this last time, too, that this site... KU is, and I represented this last time too, that this site is the most connected mass-transit site of any site in your entire community. 187 buses go by here from about 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, when school's in session. It's unprecedented access to almost anywhere in the city you want to go, from Target to west side, east side, south side, north side, you can get there via a bus. So there's no reason not to have a car. So a kid can say, Mom, Dad, you know, I'll, I'll keep my car at home, because I really want to live here, I can walk to that campus, it's got all these amenities, it's cool, it's a neat place to live, I'll, I'll do that, to save money. And then, and those would be those four-bedroom kids, because those are the kids that are paying less in the building, so they're more cost-conscious. So we talked about the larger, the larger costs, so the facts are supported not only by our experience as developers, our development team has developed over 10,000 student housing across the country, but our, but our, our capital partners, who've done multiples of that, hundreds of thousands, and they're, it's, it's their money, and they're saying it's not necessary, and they're willing to put their money literally where their mouth is and say, we're not, we're, you know, they're in, it's a for-profit idea, they, they don't feel that there's any risk there. City staff has confirmed that, they're an objective source of information. KU has also, with their strong understanding of kids' behavior specific to this area, are also saying that it's okay. And the other communities, from their collective experience, say that you're reporting to have something that's really doesn't exist in other communities, this one-to-one ratio on mixed-use projects at this scale. However, we are very conscious of those letters that you've received from the Ori Neighborhood Group, and I, I bet you've received some calls and concerns, and residents of the area, and you're referencing a big problem, this big parking problem. It was addressed in that Ori Neighborhood Plan nine years ago, and it's still a problem today. We didn't create it, and we're not contributing to it, we're just stuck in it. The, 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 the biggest picture, biggest thing that was kind of, that wasn't really elaborated on in the staff report, is this idea of these commuter parking. You guys I know are discussing that. When you're competing with the free parking option, when all these kids from all those other areas that we've studied, all those other projects that are bringing their car in, because they can park in the neighborhood for free, if you, if you actually fix that problem and, and had some sort of permit problem, solution to that, this whole problem would be materially better, far more so than whether our project came or went. I mean, if we, if, if our project doesn't happen, this project, this problem will still exist. It's a band-aid, 100 stalls in this band-aid, there's thousands of stalls in, in question here, and how they're utilized. So we, we, as a potential future resident and member of this neighborhood, we would like to become a future member of these associations, we hear them loud and clear. We would be on record as the largest, potentially the largest property owner in your, in your community, as on record is saying, that is a good idea, that is consistent with our understanding to have these, these, these permit parking around the university. Those cities do not have, that have the exact same problem you do, you are not unique. So we, we would wholeheartedly encourage you to really fix the problem, and not necess, and not, and not say, say no to a project that is so significant and unique as, as this one. We all have a lot at stake, your vote tonight is, is critical. As a developer, I have a lot of money to lose. The current owner of the Berkeley Flats has elected not to lease their space in order to meet our timeframe, in order for us to actually purchase the property and actually be open for our timeline of, of fall 2016. They have a lot to lose, because they've taken a big risk. And Miss Bell won't be able to move, but none of those are important to your decision. There's just the facts of where we are. What is important to you though, is that you're voting either to have a significant, perhaps the most significant off-campus asset that will benefit KU, your single-largest and most important economic engine of this entire community. They support this project, because all the big universities of their ilk have projects like this around them, they have multiple projects like it. This is our first, this is your first one. They help retain students, they help attract students, because students are getting harder and harder to find. We're right now in a trough where the demographics of those kids going to school were on downturn, and hence, everyone's struggling to attract kids. This is in a very public area, right across from the stadium, the 20,000 kids that go to KU senior, in, in high school every year, will undoubtedly see this building, not because it's, it's a function of its sheer size and its, and its location. Our amenities, the first floor, we have the opportunity to bring some really unique retail to your community that you don't have right now. It will be in addition, not only, it would be an amenity to us and our residents, it will be an amenity to the Ori Neighborhood, it would be an amenity to the students of KU, to the thousands of visitors every year, to the faculty, and the general residents of, of, of the region. Because they, they recognize the proximity to, to 30-plus thousand miles, they eat a lot all the time, is a very good idea. The city has a lot at stake as well. There's a lot of family-supporting jobs associated with this project, a lot of them, for a duration of about a year and a half to two years. There's a tremendous increment to be had or lost as it relates to this project. And this project brings a level of sophistication and uniqueness that is unprecedented in your community. We'll have the first robotic parking, that will be a national story, or at least it'll be a Midwestern story. It will definitely hit the KU, the Kansas papers, and Topeka, and, and Kansas City, they've got baseball, but you've got the robotic parking garage. So it all comes down to 100 stalls, and, you know, there's been comments about, you know, a big project like this, what, what's 100 stalls? They'll, they'll, they'll do it anyway. You all run your own businesses, or you're in business, or you run your own personal fences, and at some point, when you're buying a car, there's some point where just the next step up is just too much, it's just not worth it. And that's kind of where our, our capital partners are. They're saying 100 stalls, we know it's not necessary, it's, it's a, it's a waste of money, show them why, and if you can't figure it out, you know, you know, they don't care. So I, I hope that the, the neighborhood will, will understand that we, we are not contributing to this problem, we want to be an advocate for fixing it, because we recognize it, and, and to the degree that our, our project will not, will not add to it, we will add a tremendous asset, we'll clean up an area that's, I, I would say, certainly on, on the decaying side of, of relevance, in a very prominent spot here. Thank you for...
Questions?
Bob?
Question. Help, Mr. Heffernan?
Sir.
Help me with the logic here.
Yes?
You're suggesting a one-bedroom apartment needs one car, a two-bedroom apartment needs two cars, but a three-bedroom apartment would only have two and a half cars, and a four-bedroom apartment would only need 2.52 car spaces to park. Why, if you're, if you're renting these rooms to individuals...
Yes.
Why would four people in a four-bedroom apartment have less cars in one proportion to a one person in a one-bedroom?
An apartment, yeah, is student housing, runs very similar to a household. If, if you're a single African, you go home, more than likely you'll have a car. I've got five kids, but I don't have seven cars. Same, the same, very simple logic applies. These kids, sharing a car with, with kids in a, in your own apartment is a, is a very well-documented idea, as is evidenced by why the other communities, the other Big 12 communities, and many other college communities beyond that, have a sliding scale for these bigger, these bigger units. It's just a function of the way it is.
Okay, then, how are you allocating your parking spaces since you're going to have less than one per bedroom? Your proposal is, are you going to sell these to, in addition to the lease?
Yes, yes, there, there's, there'll be a, a cost to these, these aren't free spaces.
So that either would be a deterrent for a person to want to bring a car to your site...
Yes.
...or it would force that person to maybe park off-site?
Or select another site.
Well, that's true, that's a third option.
I mean, I, I think that's the most logical, to be honest with you. Paying for parking is a very unique idea in Kansas, it's not elsewhere, but here it is, and we're going to be asking to charge, because of the level of convenience that a robotic parking, there's a lot of operating expense involved with that. It'll, it's a very unique experience, and for those so inclined, it will be an unparalleled level of, of service, where you can actually call your car with your smartphone, but that's not for everybody.
What do you charge for a parking space? Is that...
Well, the, the metrics to that are a function of so many variables that have yet to be determined. Electricity is a huge operating expense in these robotic parking garages, we have not done all the calculations for all that, that would be a huge component as to what actually costs us to even supply the space. So the, the costs involved with the spacer, is not only the, the cubic capacity of the garage and the earthwork that we talked about last time, then it's the, then it's the, the, the system itself, there's a lot of fixed costs to that, then there's incremental costs for each space, and then there's the operating, physical operating cost of actually retrieving the power, getting it, and over the course of a year, which the lease would be for, that would be co-terminous with the lease of the unit, there are expenses. So those are all summed together in order to determine our rate, and that's a function of so many other things. We recognize we're competing against free spaces, so there, there'll be a reason for kids not to want to bring their car or, or go somewhere else.
Okay. Mr. Heffernan, you were talking about, people weren't, you're only going to have one person per bedroom, correct?
Per bedroom, correct.
How do you keep overnight guests out? Everybody has visitors.
There'll be, there'll be very specific terms in the leases of what constitutes a visitor, the duration of their stay will certainly be one of men.
Okay.
So someone that stays one night is a lot different than someone who stays a week or a semester, that would not be tolerated, that's not, that would be a gross violation of the lease. These, these leases are all parental guaranteed, with severe economic ramifications to their parents.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rene Diaz, I live at 926 Indiana Street, I've lived there for 26 years. I see this every day. It's wonderful to see this in the virtual world at a distance, and to see that everything's going to go smooth, but the fact is, the cost of these units, and the students who can afford a unit like this versus units who rent in houses all around me, is quite a difference. And a lot of students I talk to along the street, I ask them, why is the new, the varsity house seems half-empty to me? I, I, I can't testify to that for sure, but I think right now, the cost of the varsity house is like 700 a person for a double. And most students are used to paying 300, 400 a month, roughly 400 now, piling up in houses all around us, with some violating those boardinghouse things, violating the five-family, you know, the five-relationship rule. There are lots of issues that go on, there are students that come and camp out with their friends almost a whole semester, they go into the basements, all of that generates the dynamic of cars, it generates cars like crazy. I have never been able to entertain groups that I am involved with or socialized with, never, it would be impossible to, to have a group to our home of, of any consequential size, other than maybe two couples, that can park in my driveway, because I have the only driveway. I'm also one of the last of the Mohicans in that stretch from Ninth to the Oriad, to the campus, frankly. I think there's one other homeowner that lives there on the other side of the street and has all the time I've lived there. But all the rest have become landlord-owned houses, and, and so dumping another 100 automobiles in spite of all the good intentions of the developers onto the street, there is no doubt in my mind, it will create a, a, a kind of a messy dynamic, so it raises lots of questions. Also, the questions that are raised, there are more questions raised by this whole project than things that are answered. Comparing this to Jayhawk Tower, I don't think is an adequate comparison. Students stay in residential towers and everything to save money, and that explains and makes sense that 70% of them might own cars. In fact, in Jayhawk Tower, I'm surprised there are that many that own cars, because most students, they try to stay on, on campus, because it's the most reasonable. Once they get off campus, they're looking for the 400, maybe 450 a month thing, some of them will pay more, there's a developer named Davis and has a partner, I don't know his partner's name, but they own all these houses with the stone bollards...
Mr. Diaz, your three minutes...
Pardon?
Your three minutes is gone.
Oh, it's gone, sorry. I didn't realize that.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't do this very often.
Oh, we appreciate it, glad to have you down here this evening.
But again, I, I raised many, many questions.
Thank you.
To live in the virtual world is, is different than those of us who live in the real world of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Second, I just put this under here. Oh. My name is Candace Davis, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Oriad Residents Association, in case I go over three minutes, right?
Three minutes.
Oh, I just get three minutes, no matter what. Okay, well, I just wanted to say that this whole project just kind of shocks me as far as the extent of it, the unreality of whether students are going to need cars or not, and it, it's amazing to me that you all have been spending a lot of time discussing less than 20 parking spaces on the street for a temporary construction project, when already we've allowed this development group to have been gifted 38 parking spaces, and then to even think that would be 100 additional. So I'm showing you this picture, and I did send it, I think, to everyone on the commission. There are exactly 58 parking spaces on those three blocks that go up Indiana Street, and this was Wednesday when I took the picture, this is all the way to the top, and basically this is where that project would be built. There was one vacant space, and that vacant space was all the way down by Ninth Street, by the gas station, so it was the absolute furthest spot away. And as a neighborhood association now, I mean, we spent a couple of years working on the neighborhood plan, we realized this area is designated higher density, we're not complaining that it was changed to involve some multi-use, fine, but what I don't understand is why someone, or anyone who's an investor, cannot just abide by the rules that are in place, and that has to do with parking. And for all of us, we have worked so hard, myself probably 15, 16 years, trying to make this a livable, stable neighborhood. So it's not all about some project, and this gentleman, or whatever he represents, was talking about 10,000 projects like projects. He should know the cost involved, but I believe we need to honor our parking commitments to the areas, I don't think that should change. I'm confused about this idea of robotic parking, what's going to happen in 10 years too, and is, what's going to happen when the robot breaks down? Who's going to be fixing it? How long will that take? What happens to all the cars in those garages? Any... Um, anyway, I just don't believe we, as a community, should be subsidizing these kind of projects. I'm not subsidized in my rental projects. I don't come here begging for, uh, help because I've spent too much money on my, my house that I wanted to rent. Um, I love the neighborhood, and I sometimes feel like a poor stepchild. So I would really, uh, like for you to look at this in, in a very sensible and fair-minded way. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment?
Hi, Linda Bush, uh, Chair of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. And, uh, I know you all received a letter from us that we support the Oriad Residents Association. And, um, I just, uh, I tell you, I, I started digging in a little deeper. And I'm one of those people, you give me a spreadsheet full of numbers, and I'm, I'm happy as can be. And I found that you can work these numbers all kinds of ways. And I think that, uh, the numbers that the applicant showed, uh, with 2.52, uh, cars per four-bedroom unit just shows how you can squeeze some numbers around where you want. Um, I think we should all keep in mind that, that we're not really talking about 100 spaces. We're talking about 137 spaces because, or 138, because, uh, some spaces have already just been given, and that was part of something you already approved. Fine, you approved the 38. Keep adding to it, and, uh, and we're now down to 80% of the original requirement. Uh, even at matching the most common, um, 2.5 per three-bedroom that was found in comparable, uh, university towns, that's 83%, so over 83%. So, uh, at that rate, there's 616 spaces you should come up with. Um, you know, 71% giving 539. The 71%, you know, I've, how, how many people were in college and parked where you weren't supposed to park because you didn't want to buy a permit? Right? Park in the neighborhood. Park in the neighborhood. So it's already, it's, it's already been said that the reason that some of the parking permit may be so low, uh, in, in the, uh, on-campus parking, uh, is because the students are already parking in the neighborhood. So it's already a problem, and we don't need to exacerbate it. Um, if we base the data, or if we base the calculation on the data for the freshman population of Stouffer Place, it looks like we need to require 9,768 parking spaces. So, you know, you can do anything you want with the numbers. Um, let's, uh, you know, let's keep things reasonable. Um, I did also notice that I really liked all the data on the other high-density developments and their parking, what they were required to provide and what they did provide or do provide. And I find it, uh, you know, interesting that if those high-density developments were able to be feasible and provide parking equal to or greater than the current code requirements, then the feasibility argument gets weaker and weaker. I couldn't find any documentation where people, uh, in other code-adherent developments were complaining about too many empty spaces. I think we never hear a complaint about too many empty spaces, uh, in town. And I think that, um, the, uh, the more we learn about the project, the less attractive it becomes and the less reasonable some aspects become. So, um, as, as far as...
Linda, your three minutes.
Okay. Just, we ask that you adhere to the existing codes and their requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comment?
Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio, and just over the hill from the location of this proposed development. Um, I've been involved with the Oriad neighborhood a long time, and a lot of the discussions have been about parking. So I do want to mention that, um, we spent some time when we were, um, earlier talking about what are reasonable parking requirements out, um, on the blocks in our neighborhood, trying to, um, establish how long cars had been there and whether they were indeed, um, parking for commuting or parking because it was extra overflow parking from residences. And we did have the data at that time to show this is not just a commuter parking problem. It is because there are people using street parking for overnight parking. Um, I'm also one of the residents. I do get to have people over to my house, but it's usually the last two weeks of December, the first week of January, um, or during the summer. I too, um, see parking, um, on 11th Street that is not commuter parking. It's not people coming up to work. It's people parking when they don't have a place at Corbin GSP. And they're parking, um, in front of our house. So a little bit up the hill, this location in many ways is easier for them. So, um, that is an issue. I think another question is, how is this like or not like other proposed developments in our neighborhood? I think everyone in our neighborhood is restricted, um, in development because of the parking requirements. So I think we have to say, how do we treat all those developers in a similar way? Um, these are neighborhoods that are close to the university. Um, they have some access to that, um, transit. Many of them provide three or four bedrooms. In fact, we've got the duplexes that are providing four bedrooms on one side of a duplex. And we see eight cars parked behind, um, almost each of those duplexes. So we need to come up with a proposal to, um, provide adequate parking for everyone who's building here. My question, I don't want to waste money building parking that we don't need. If that's the case, um, and we can do this, my question is, what do we do if we find out that it's not working? What is the proposal at that time? Is there a parcel of property where we tear down an existing structure, um, and build a parking garage? That's a reasonable proposal to have. But I think to say, simply, trust us, we're looking at numbers, we think they would work, is not a good one. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick Robinson, 3116 Trail Road. I was here once before when I didn't know this was on the agenda, but I certainly hope they build it. It's a beautiful project. Um, that said though, as you don't know, this is the most important crucial issue here is the parking. Um, to expand on this gentleman's comments, because he ran out of time, is that I think you should just take Jayhawk, Jayhawk Towers out of the equation. That shouldn't even be considered as parking, because I think everyone here knows who are, who are the people that are housed there? Uh, the basketball team, the football team, and sports teams, many of them come from very challenged economic conditions, who would be lucky if their families have a car, let alone them as individuals. So I would certainly recommend that you take that out of the equation when you think about spots for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment?
My name's Tom Harper. Um, you know, this must be really frustrating for you guys. We have an applicant who said they were going to do one thing, and now three-quarters down the road changes their mind because it's no longer profitable. It's amazing the, the number of assumptions that were thrown out tonight that were stated as facts. If, if we had a fact-finder here, I, I think he would have a full-time job to figure out what was really true and what was said. This is about parking, and it's about money. And the developer is asking the City of Lawrence and the, the, specifically the, the people of Oriad, and the people that go to and pro the hill, up and down the hill, to accept this risk, and his assumption that, uh, more parking is not needed. And I just don't think that's worth your risk. I'm concerned about emergency personnel being able to get around, uh, effectively up there. I think they said, they had an agreement with, with the city to, uh, provide X number of parking spaces. I think they should just follow through with it, period. And I hope that you have the, the, the courage to just be true to the, the ordinances and zoning requirements that the city has in place and not grant a variance. And I could almost bet you that if they go away, somebody else will come and submit a proposal, and it will be within the boundaries, guidelines of the city. I just don't think it's worth the risk. Thank you.
Thanks. Other comment? Okay, back to the commission. Any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Okay. The item that is before us is whether or not to, uh, uh, look at a reduction of 100 spaces, uh, in, in this particular project, and then to make the determination that the structure complies with the maximum height. Any questions or comments on either one? Well, then I for one, I'm here to tell you, you know, I drove up through Oriad, uh, uh, a lot over the last couple of weeks. And I don't see, you know, I, I see parking as, as the ultimate problem in the area. I don't know where all those cars are coming from, don't have a clue. But I got to believe that, you know, the combination, there's probably a combination between both commuter parking and, and residents that live there. Is there enough parking? I don't know. We've wrestled with this, I don't know how many times, on whether, what the appropriate amount of parking is, um, uh, for that area and, and in fact throughout the community. Our ordinance says that there'll be, you know, one space per bedroom, you know. I, I, to, to be honest with you, I have not, uh, uh, felt that the case has been made to reduce the number of spaces at this location. I think, I, I think, be very honest with you, uh, there's going to be shortage because I don't, uh, this is a massive project. Uh, I think it's a very good project. But I think, uh, our ordinance is, um, uh, something that, uh, uh, addresses, you know, the parking the best that we can at one, one space per bedroom. So that's where I'm at. Any other comment? Got you. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Are you talking about both this height and the...
Yeah, the height and, yeah. The height, you know, I, I think it's fine. I, I, I think that that is, you know, just...
So I guess my question is, does it need to be...
It can be separate. It can be separate deals.
I move we approve the height issue.
Second?
It's 89 feet in the northwest corner.
Motion made in the second, uh, made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. Are there any other questions about the structure that complies with the maximum height? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes 5-0. Now we're at the parking issue again.
This won't go away, will it?
Well, I'll just say this.
Please.
I've always been a fan of this project, and, um, I've always thought it was going to be a great, great thing for our community. I've always been supportive of it. Um, the parking issue though, I think Jim did say something that was accurate. Irrespective of whether or not we give an allowance of 100 spaces, um, we do need to continue looking at this issue. And, and we have to make it a priority enough to have a conversation to, to fix it. And I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think that, that it's incumbent upon us to, you know, not keep coming back to this with insanity being the same thing, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. I think it's very unfair, uh, for us and to, to the neighborhood to continue to have this issue, you know, come back. And I'm not sure what the answer is, but, um, you know, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, but I don't know. And, and I don't know who is, but, but that would be my, my two cents. On the parking issue, um, you know, I've driven up there nearly every day for the past three weeks. And, um, there's, there's no possible way that I could give, uh, a reduction of 100 spaces, um, to, to this project. So, um, I, I would not be supportive of that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I would just say that I'd like this project, um, but I haven't been convinced that the number of reduction of spaces is not going to harm the parking in this area and cause a problem. And really can't support it for that reason. It's something we can't fix later on. If we get it wrong, it's wrong forever.
Okay. Mike, well?
Yeah, I, there's been a lot of great points brought up. I, I think Mr. Heffernan indicated we got a lot of email from, uh, the Oriad neighborhood, but we got a lot of calls and input from other members of our community, other developers, other people who own single-family dwellings that they rent out that comply with the rules. And, you know, I just don't know if the Oriad neighborhood is ready for a project like this because of the existing, the pre-existing issue we have with parking. And I just, uh, it just really makes me sad that, um, we are regulating our community based on the availability of parking when we want to claim to be a sustainable community and try to do things that, uh, avert vehicular use. Um, I, I went to college for four years. I didn't have a car. So I don't see a big deal of not having a car. I live right off campus, and I had to walk everywhere. But I see people's points. I mean, there's a, there's an existing parking problem, but I'm not going to debate whether or not people are going to have or not have cars. That's just conjecture, and I think it's not fair to the argument. So clearly, we have a set of rules. The neighbors want us to follow the rules. Other parts of the community want us to follow the rules. I think we have a parking problem in the Oriad neighborhood that we need to fix. And to continue to stand by and let projects like this, um, you know, become in jeopardy because we have a bad parking problem in our community, I think reflects poorly on this commission. I think we need to do something to change things in that area. And this needs to be the, the stimulus to do so. If this 78 million or 70 million or whatever the total cost is going to be with or without the additional parking, if this is something that we're going to chase off because of parking, I'm, I'm, I'm very sad because, um, it's, it's not the right reason for us not to have this in our community. Um, but I, I respect all the neighbors that live there, and it stinks, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want to force an extra 100 cars into that area because I don't know where they would go. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really hesitant to do this change, especially if we don't have a plan of action to fix the parking problem in the Oriad neighborhood. But again, this is something that we need to, uh, not dismiss and just walk off, you know, wipe our hands and walk away for the next person to come along and tries to do something with some density in our community. Because we've got a bus system we're all paying for. We have public transportation that University of Kansas uses. I think, um, if we can't be real about wanting that and use, using that, then, then we need to really focus on, on what, what we want our community to be. And, um, I was in favor of this project from day one. I think it's a great, uh, addition to our community. I think, um, I think the original plan was better with the right number of cars. And, you know, my, my hope is that maybe Mr. Heffernan can figure out that if parking's such a commodity, people will pay high dollar to park up here. And perhaps if his spaces are going unused, he can lease them out and recover the return on the investment that way. And so we can still have this project and have the parking necessary. That's my feeling.
Okay. Everthing?
Yeah, just quickly, um, I, I'm in concert with the rest of the comments, maybe I won't go over them. But I just think that, uh, I agree with Commissioner Dever that the parking system is broken, needs to be fixed. I, I, I'm up there occasionally early in the morning and on weekends, and there's plenty of spaces because there's no classes. So it's the folks that are coming in for the cheap park. I don't know if sticker situations, the answer, certainly, certainly could be. Uh, but, uh, even Mr. Heffernan said tonight that other communities that don't manage their parking adjacent to campus have the same problems. So I'm, I'm convinced that that's, uh, something that we could tackle and probably could find, uh, the appropriate answer for, to where there's more available parking. Maybe that then changes the dynamics of a project like this. I also support this project. I think it's a marvelous project for the community. It's just that the parking, I'm fearful of dumping that parking into an already congested area that is only going to suffer more if you do that. And it's more, it's, it's even likely that that could spread further out. Well, Mr. Heffernan suggests that no one's going to walk four blocks. They certainly might. You might have people parking all west lawns. And I'm not sure, but you, you'll hear about it if that starts to happen. So, um, I don't know what, I, I can't support it the way it is right now. And that's in part because Oriad has a, an extensive parking problem right now. So, anyway, I, I certainly hope we see the project, uh, but I can't, uh, I can't support... certainly hope we see the project, but I can't, I can't support the reduction of parking.
Sandy, we've approved the height, maximum height meeting, all that. The other, the item that was before us is to approve the revised preliminary development plan. Is there an action that we need to take there, or can we just take an action? Deny the request?
The applicant actually has an approved preliminary development plan that you have previously acted on. Their request was to modify that approval to reduce the parking.
Good.
And with that more recent revision, came the overall building height. Building height may still be applicable with some of their more current drawings.
Okay, so then there's no action that's necessary after that?
On the preliminary development plan.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda then, is general public comment.
I'll make a brief, Mr. Reardon. Rick Robinson, 3116 Trail Road. Just want to encourage everyone at the November elections, in two weeks, encourage everybody to get out and vote. I'd also encourage all the citizens in our town to vote no on the sales tax issue. The, there's a couple of things about the sales tax, it's regressive, it hurts at least they're able to afford it, and we also say on our website that we have here in our city that we're using the sales tax to capture money from non-residents, but yet, and non-residents on our website says it's visitors, students, and corporations outside our city, but yet, just two days ago, Mr. Corliss, our city manager, indicated, when he was asked a question about the access cards to Rock Chalk Tax Park, that we got to let our students in, they're residents, so, our city doesn't even have its own definition of what a resident is, we're very inconsistent with their definitions. Apparently, if we want to get a sales tax for a project that we absolutely want, then they're non-residents, but then, when we want to allow them in somewhere, they're residents, so, anyway, I don't understand the logic in that, but, also, I'd indicate that the site and location is a poor choice, we're overpurchasing land, the value's too high, the efficiency argument used by the city, because I understand it's not a safety issue, because this commissioner, chief of police, has never said it's about safety, it's always about efficiency. None of the other locations will be changed, therefore, the mileage and all these trips that have been said that are going to disappear will not, so, again, it's just ways that people couch terms to get what they hope to get by selling to public, and that's fine, that's what this is all about. One of the things that's also been proposed by this commission is that we'll sell off city-owned land, but nowhere in this tax initiative, or in the ballot question itself, does it say that any land owned by the city that is sold during the nine-year period would be automatically used to reduce the debt for this police facility? As you all know, that money would go straight into the general fund, and you could use it out of what you wish, or future commissioners can use it out of what they wish. So, there's no mechanism for that, so, when that's put out in the public like that, that's kind of misinformation, because it's absolutely not true. One of the things I learned last week, because I work for a city as well, it's a contract employee, a lot of bids just came in, cannot just let a bunch of bids, all of them are coming back 10 to 15 percent higher, so, with that in mind, the city should expect that this police facility is going to cost 10 to 15 percent more, as of today, and when this thing hit the path, so, either one thing's going to have to happen, either you have to put more tax on the rooftops to cover the additional expense, or you're going to have to reduce the square footage to meet the number that you've already set. So, with that, I'll end, because I know everyone wants to go, and I'll say, "Oh, Roy, thanks".
Did you hear something? Anyone else? Okay.
Sure. I just want to address a few of those things. Mr. Robinson continues to make asinine comments.
Wait a minute, wait.
That are...
Oh, timeout, okay, we're not going to...
No, I'm just going to address a few of the comments.
Okay, but we're going to do it...
Sure.
...with respect of the individual.
The definitions argument is residents versus non-residents, I think everybody understands that, I've not heard anything, anything about that, that, you know, would give credence to the fact that people don't understand that, I just think that's semantics. But, you know, in relationship to the efficiency argument, this is about public safety, and, you know, we could have, we could have had a conversation about this in a different way, and we could have said that, you know, if we don't get a new facility, that our police department will not be as efficient, and as a result of that, that people will die, but we would have been criticized, and rightfully so, of being disingenuous, and so, I think that, you know, we've been straight up and told the truth regarding this being about efficiency, and this being about money that's saved, you know, we are not going to be going to the same places, we won't be going to the FOP Lodge, we won't be going from 15th and Waukesha to 11th Street. And so, I just think it's important that people really read up on the facts, and I would encourage them to get on the city's website, take a look at the tours, understand how we've, we're spread across six sites, and we'll be going down to one, and I just think it's important for folks to understand, you know, the truth in relationship to all this, rather than, you know, those who continue to spout misinformation regarding these various things, that are obviously trying to, you know, give people more just cause to vote no. And Dave, I just wanted to ask a question on the city-owned land, would it behoove us to produce some sort of resolution stating our intent to, because I know that's always been the understanding?
Vice President, we made it very clear when we committed to the property, that we weren't funding the property purchase with the sales tax.
Right.
That tells me that we've got to have other revenue sources to pay for the purchase of the property. We're going to sell the ITC, obviously, we can't sell it till we leave, but we're going to sell that property, we're going to get funding from the county in regards to our vacation of the judicial law enforcement building. So, there's already revenue that will then go to offset the property acquisition costs that we have. We're also then going to sell the property that we otherwise don't need at that location. You've already directed me to look through all of the property that we have, to see if there's surplus property, we know we've got acreage at the very tail end of Bob Billings Parkway, it's going to be used for construction staging while that interchange is built, and then, once that interchange is built, it'll be at its highest market value, we're going to sell that property that was otherwise acquired for public safety purposes, that will also reduce our property acquisition costs, so, that was in the memo when we had the acquisition of the property, so, you can speak more to that if you want to, but I think you already have, the numbers are such that we have to use those proceeds to reduce our acquisition costs.
Okay, thank you.
Do you believe those are sufficient, and to do that without a resolution?
Well, I mean, if that's an if, in fact, that is an issue, which we don't really know if it is, other than just being one person's opinion, I mean, it might be good for us to, you know, to do that, to make a stronger statement for, you know, what that is, but, either way, you know, to bound, I mean, I don't think any future commission is going to say dump that money back into the general fund to use it for any other purpose, I think we've been pretty, you know, direct on what we want that money to be used for.
The funding for the acquisition is not coming from the sales tax, it's coming from other city resources.
Right.
The sale of all of the different assets that we laid off will then have to reimburse the different funds that we take, in order to acquire that property, so, that's just the math.
Okay, thanks.
Timeout, timeout, no, 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 no. Yeah, well, you've had your time, and, Vice... Yeah, okay. Any other public comment?
Can I say something here?
Please.
So, one thing I learned from the negative comments regarding the use of our sales tax, our 1994 sales tax dollars, was the non-explicit statement in item one of our sales tax referendum, where the number one priority was to use for recreational purposes. People have brought this up as a inappropriate juxtaposition of projects and use of city funds, and so, by using hindsight, I feel like it's very important for us to be crystal clear about the intent of any money that's raised by the sales tax, the specific use of that, and I think it wouldn't hurt to, in some way, make this explicit, how these sales, how the dollars from the sale of these assets owned by our community, by the taxpayers, gets dumped back into, repay the city for funds dispersed for the acquisition of land. I think you did a tremendous job reducing the sales tax by identifying land as an external, by motivating the city to sell the property, by making it clear to the community that we're not going to sit on land, we're going to sell it off at its highest and best use, and then apply those dollars to the acquisition of this land. And I think all of this monkeying around with, you know, semantics here, needs to be clear that we should learn, that we need to be crystal clear in a public forum, in a public way, in writing, what our intentions are, and if we haven't been, then, we need to task the city manager with making so, because I don't want these same conversations coming back 20 years from now, when people complain about when the sales tax is passed, whether or not the dollars were used for the intended purpose, because I think it's been, I think it's been unclear to people why we used the sales tax dollars for Rock Chalk Park, and the eventual use for the sports pavilion, and I think it needs to be, we need to learn from that mistake, if there's any doubt in anybody's mind, we need to say it over and over again. So, if we can do that, that would be my plea.
Dave, write us up a resolution that says exactly where that money's going to be, how it's going to be paid, where it's going to go, okay?
You're not changing the sales tax language, though?
Nope, not at all.
But, so, there's any, there's no...
There's no doubt where this money's going. Okay?
And I think the point has been made that we want to sell land, and any land sold will go towards the reduction of the debt to purchase the land.
Yeah, the land, that's reasonable land for land swap, and it reduces the cost to the taxpayers. I don't know how much more clear you can be.
That'll take care of the problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's no other public comment, commission items, Dave, update on 920 Missouri?
We have met with the applicant, the property owner on 920 Missouri, they have submitted a special use permit application for the property, Scott's going to have a memo on that for next week, the special use permit would allow them to construct an additional residential structure off the alley, that would keep the existing 920 Missouri structure intact. I think it meets with staff's recommendation for beginning the process, the demolition permit would then be held in abeyance, because he's not planning on demolishing it unless he doesn't have the ability to go ahead and make an additional structure off that alley, in keeping with some of the Oriad neighborhood plans that we've talked about in regards to that, all has to be processed through the special use permit, where the application will have to be reviewed by the planning commission, eventually the city commission, when we think that that's a good step forward.
But here again, this is one property, and...
Correct, and it doesn't really get out of the larger issue about the fact that that neighborhood is zone multifamily, you've got single-family structures that are used as multifamily, and that sometimes they are candidates for demolition and replacement with the structure that's not so much in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood, so you've still got that issue.
Okay. Well, that is something that we may want to talk about one of these days, so, anyway. Jerry?
One quick, less significant comment, approximately two weeks ago, my dog got sent to jail, and my wife called up and asked if she could get the dog out of jail, the person said no, then she said, "I hate to pull the city commission card, but will that help?", and she said, "No", so we went the next day and got our dog out of jail, and code is code, and I think the city treats its citizens pretty consistently well, and we try to be transparent and consistent with each citizen, so...
Is your dog tied up?
The fence is 93 feet tall.
What's a dog, a dog in jail costs nowadays?
A lot. It's a lot. I've had the same misfortune.
Well, thanks for the general fund contribution, Jerry.
You're welcome. Any other commission items? Okay, calendar, Dave?
Only thing to, one point, I've got a lot of things on the calendar there, is that we are going to have a quick opening event at the MRF, the Material Recovery Facility, next Tuesday, I think we've got it at 4:00, we're not trying to take all of your Tuesdays, but I know Commissioner Dever had an opportunity to see the facility, it's, as you saw photos from Chuck today, the facility's in operation, it's receiving the recycling goods, so we wanted at least to have a celebration with the fact that we're underway with that, so we're going to try and do that next Tuesday.
It won't look for a time.
I think we've got it at 4:00.
On the 28th?
On the 28th, correct.
Yeah, I don't see it on the calendar.
Well, we just did, we don't have the time confirmed, but we just wanted to let you know about that. If you can come, great, I know Mike's been to it, but it might be good to see it in operation, so we'll look forward to that.
Had our ribbon cutting this afternoon at New Venture Park, which was a wonderful ceremony. I did want to make mention that I visited with one of the staff members of Lawrence Memorial, it looks like that we may meet with the trustees after the first of the year, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
We'll set it, we'll get a date set up between you and administration now, okay? Any other calendar items? There came a motion to adjourn. Motion made in second?
Aye.
To adjourn, Shum, Farmer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.